I'd like to start the meeting at 6:00 PM. I'll call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask all of you to stand, please, so we could pledge to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to have you remain standing. We'd like to have a moment of silence for Robin, Ms. Robin Duberger. She passed away on Saturday. We're sending all of our thoughts, prayers, and love to her family. So, thank you. We'll start the moment of silence right now. Please be seated. Okay. Public input? Anybody out there have a tiny input? [laughing] Thank you for coming, you two. Reports and presentations from the chairperson. I wanted to just give everyone a heads up that we have a joint meeting at the police station to talk about the early FY '27 budget with the town committees. And are we going to talk about the mask meeting now? No, I think we're, nope, that's at five. So, that's the only thing that I have for our correspondence. Thank you. Student advisory report. All right, Lila.
Just a minute. Okay. So, I'm here to talk about what happened at the intermediate school during the month of November. So, first, on November 10th, they held their annual Veterans Day breakfast. And this was just an event where military families were invited to the intermediate school to join their students and other families for a community breakfast. And there's a few pictures. And there's a few more pictures. There's a lot of people there. This is also an event that, I know, this is also an event, it also happened at the high school for high school students and their families as well.
Yeah, a lot of people attended that.
Yeah. And then, second, on the 13th, there was a Wampanoag presentation where the third grade students were visited by local members of the Wampanoag tribe. And they were just able to learn about different traditions and histories of culture and cultures of the Wampanoag tribe, like on Cape Cod. And then, lastly, on the 25th, the intermediate school held their first-ever turkey trot, where students were able to run and cheer along their classmates the day before Thanksgiving break. And talking to a few intermediate school students, they mentioned that they had a lot of fun running, that they had, this was a fun way to celebrate, and that they hope it comes back again next year.
Good. I love the pictures.
And that's that.
Do you guys notice how it's, like, I don't know the word, but your presentation was so exciting on paper? Like, the way you splashed the, all the words and stuff. You did a really good job.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
That was great. Thank you, Lila. All righty. Superintendent's report. Dr. Joe.
We'll hear more about the different events later. I have all the updates from the principals, but it really was a lot of fun. Turkey trots at two schools this year, including at the middle school. But that was at BIS's first. It was, it was really a good time. And then, also, Veterans Day at all four schools. They were really nice remembrances in different ways, so I really enjoyed all of that. I do want to, if I may, take a moment myself to recognize Robin. It was a sudden loss to us, and her, it will really be felt in our schools. So, I'd like to take a moment to recognize a member of our Bourne Public Schools family whom we lost this past weekend. Robin Duberger served the children of Bourne for more than 20 years as an educational support professional or an ESP. She was deeply devoted to our youngest learners, mostly at Bourndale School, and it was widely known how much joy she found in supporting students each day. Her kindness, patience, and dedication touched countless children and colleagues over the years. And actually, we have a pretty large picture of her in our central office as part of our collection of student pictures, where she was helping one little guy one year. Just a beautiful person. So, as we remember Robin, we also hold her family, including those who are part of our BPS staff, in our thoughts and praise for this difficult time. So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
The rest of my report, I promise I won't shed tears, but we do have a condensed version today, because we don't have a lot of things on the agenda, but I'm going to hand it over for teaching and learning to Christine Borning. We'll go down the line, and then we'll come back to me for all of the events.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so also have a condensed report today. It's been such a busy time of year, and I know you'll hear about some of that in the individual building reports as well, but I do want to congratulate Tristan Burke and the cast of Lord of the Flies. They did a really unique play in just the way that they presented it, black box style, and the students were incredibly well-prepared, so congratulations. We also had Charlie Baird, his first chorus concert last night, that I heard was wonderful, so congratulations to him. And we have many more musical and theatrical performances coming up in the next two weeks, so, just a really nice celebration of many talents throughout the district. We've completed learning walks in three buildings, with our BHS walk coming soon. We have seen really strong examples of math and literacy workshop, pre-K to eighth, in all of the buildings, and that has been a huge focus for us. As you know, math workshop in particular, but literacy workshop as well. We've seen consistent implementation of our core curriculum resources, and we've observed application of many of the strategies and resources that have been shared throughout the professional development. So, overall, just a really strong start, I think, to our district learning walks. So, kudos to all of the staff that have been part of that. Our instructional council continues to meet and plan for future professional development. We're focusing on four key areas. Developing systems to support peer-driven professional development, including ways for teachers to share their expertise during PD days, as well as a system for peer-to-peer observations. We do have that in some little pockets here and there, but we really want that to be something that people can engage in systematically. We want to make sure that we're sustaining all of our current curriculum efforts, and that's really, I think, a lot around how we onboard our new staff and how we make sure that as people transition in their roles, we really provide strong training around the current curriculum and instructional practices, such as workshop, just as a for instance. We want to ensure that we have a common unit and lesson template district-wide, and certainly planning our future PD. For the remainder of this year, our focus really is around curriculum alignment and collaboration, just given the move-one-up in the new expand model. So, we're really focusing on that with the instructional council. And finally, some exciting news from the high school. Our Part A application for the advanced manufacturing pathway was approved, so we've moved to Part B of the application. That is the engineering pathway. So, that is really exciting work going on there. And then, we've received very positive feedback on our Part A application for our first Chapter 74 program, which would be the design and visual communication. It's very similar to the ICP, however, it really is an actual, like, tech program. And that program includes graphic design, marketing, and printing. So, our high school team, from Dr. McGuire, Jessie Clements, Anne Marie Strode, and the design and visual communication, that has also involved Sean Silva's work. So, very congratulations to them, and like, a lot of appreciation to them for all the work they've done so far. So, we're moving forward in the process on both of those.
Very good. Yeah, that is very exciting news.
Great. Thank you, Christine. Mr. Gais.
Thank you, Dr. Joe. I will provide the FY '26 budget update at the next school committee meeting, but we're tracking, as usual, for this time of year. We're still developing the FY '27 budget. Carrie and I had a preliminary meeting with the town administrator and finance director. They were supportive of our preliminary numbers. I attended last month's select board meeting on November 18th. The finance director gave a presentation on the long-range financial, long-range financial plan and planning for the town for FY, that included FY '27. This report is available online on the town's website. There were some key takeaways to that report that I'd like to share with you. Bourne, like many municipalities across the state, are facing what some newspapers are calling it historic pressures due to expenditures outpacing revenues. And again, Bourne is no different. The finance, finance director, one of her key takeaways was ensuring fiscal sustainability over the long term. It's going to require a lot of very careful planning and strategies. Starting in FY '27, for the town of Bourne, expenditures are going to outpace revenue, and that's going to increase for the foreseeable future. So, building fair and responsible budgets into FY '27 and beyond is going to be a challenge for all of us. Health insurance costs are continuing to rise at really, she referred to as unsustainable rates. There's been a lot of forward planning by the town and reserve funds that have been utilized to date. So, the town has been able to limit the impact of those rising costs, but this is also going to come to an end in the coming years. So, they're also going to have to really take a hard look at, you know, the budget and the capital projects that are going to need to be prioritized moving forward, because it's an additional pressure on the town as well. And of course, they also need to just stay cognizant of the increased pressure that all this is going to have on Bourne taxpayers. Next up in the FY '27 budget cycle is the December 16th joint meeting with the Board of Select, Select People, Persons, the Finance Committee, you all, if you can make it, and UCT at 7:00 PM at the police station. We're also going to be presenting our capital request to the Capital Committee sometime over the next week or two. It's either Monday next week, the 8th, or 12:15. And after all that sort of doom and gloom, facilities, we have no updates.
You really brought the room down.
That's my job.
Oh, my goodness. Thank you so much. So, those challenges, everything that we've voted on thus far were good, right? As far as, like, the monies for next year?
We haven't voted for that yet. You all have. We're not, we're, the budget presentation to you all will be in the coming months.
So, we've been preparing, we're a little ahead of the game in that, you know, we gave the move-one-up scenario. We had some, some budget figures as part of that, but you haven't done the budget hearing yet that was where you would vote.
I see, okay.
We had, as Jordan said, we had, I thought, a really productive conversation with the finance director and the town administrator. We told her where we were trending, which is, and so, no surprises, you'll hear this again from them in, like, the 3.7 range as the over from last year, which, in a normal budget, is a little higher than we like to be. We try to be, you know, under or around three, but we are adding classrooms at the lower levels.
Yeah.
So, and I won't speak for the town administrator, but that meeting was productive in that they understood why we needed that money, and they know it's for our Bourne residents so that we don't have class sizes that are too big. So, that's the number they're working with to try to balance what they'll be able to put forward. Time will tell.
Yes, excellent.
They still need to do their budget hearings, we do our budget hearings, and then it goes to town meeting. But as of right now, we felt that they understood the need for the ask. And we'll try to, we'll continue to try to whittle that down, but that's where we trend right now. Given what we know about special ed, which is usually, you know, the wildcard, that we don't know until further into the spring.
Right.
But it took into account all of the positions that we were talking about.
Great.
That answers your question.
Thank you.
So, you're welcome. But I echo what Jordan says. Communities across the state are feeling this pinch. Our hope is always that the state is also hearing from us, and will increase Chapter 70's money to take some of the pressure off of the towns, and it all will eventually play out. So, that's our hope, but as of right now, we were budgeting for what we need for next year, and we're looking forward to the years after, knowing that they might do leaner budgets if the state doesn't help.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you for that explanation.
You're welcome. Mr. Oliver.
Thank you, Dr. Joe. Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving. So, I'd like to set off by just a quick shout-out to my team, John, Nick, and Treaser. They've been doing a tremendous amount of work over the past several months with getting everything up and running, and a lot of different projects, so I just wanted to send a quick thank you, shout-out to them. Since our last meeting, we've had a few updates. The technology department has been working on several new projects on top of our general maintenance and troubleshooting of what else but Chromebooks and other, other computer issues. The week prior to Thanksgiving, we actually had a ringing inspection done in our high school auditorium. We were looking at future lighting upgrades, and this was the first step before considering any type of lighting upgrades or anything, or set upgrades. We want to make sure all of our set and lighting ringing is safe and in a good working order. I expect to have the report back late January, and we'll go from there on what our next steps might be. In addition, Verizon has begun some site work at the middle school to begin running a new internet circuit for the school department. This is, you may have heard me mention it. This is going to be a redundant internet line as well for redundancy and increased speeds for our Wi-Fi and our desktop computers, which is always a good thing. And we, I, we have already begun working on our FY '27 E-Rate cycle. E-Rate's our federal grant, one of our federal grants that allows us to subsidize our internet connections as well as equipment such as access points in some of the non-glamorous things that are stuck tucked away in closets. So, one of the projects that we're looking at is bringing Wi-Fi to the stadium and some of the other outdoor areas with that. So, we're expanding our Red Rover absence management system to include hiring and onboarding of staff. This is, this is actually, I, definitely needed, and I'm excited to get the process started. Starting over the winter, postings will be placed in the Red Rover public online website in addition to school spring. So, you know how we have school spring, which we use all of our, we put all of our postings on school spring, at least for the, for the first six months to a year. We'll continue to use school spring, but when applicants want to apply, there'll be a link that takes them to our Red Rover portal, in which they will start the on, the application process through Red Rover. So, essentially, anyone viewing postings in school springs will be directed to Red Rover to apply. This new system will dramatically improve workflows for job postings, the general interview process, and hi, and the hiring process. So, this will take us from job postings through the hiring process to onboarding of staff. So, we're looking at making all of our, our forms, onboarding forms, digital, which will be all of our, our applications, everything, it's going to go digital. So, we're actually moving ahead. This is definitely a heavy lift. There's a lot of moving parts and working with building admin and Celeste and, and central office, but we think this will pay dividends in the long run.
Nice.
Finally, just an update on our new technology integration position. Mr. John Troy, who started with us in August, has been hot at work in our schools. He's been spending dedicated time in our schools, working directly with our teachers, which is something we had hoped for. You had approved that job, that new job description last year, and it certainly has paid off. In addition to all the projects that he's working on, Mr. Troy, as well as Mr. Uchakounas, who is our systems admin, has a, they have a senior intern that they've been working with here from Bourne High School, and that we're working with him to train him and to try to troubleshoot some of the basic, basic issues and get him into the classroom. So, that's the, the technology report.
That's great. Thank you.
Mrs. Donahue. Thank you. So, for a short November month, we did accomplish quite a few several priority tasks. First, we completed an internal audit alongside the final round for our corrective action plan. It has documented that it's led to significant improvements in some of the compliance standards, particularly with staff and attendance at meetings, evaluation report writing, and meeting the required deadlines. Everything in special ed has a deadline. We are continuing to refine our efficiency in meeting the DESI requirement, ensuring that finalized IEP are in the parents' and guardians' hands within five days. To support that, we're working with, on strategies and tools through Power Schools, just to see if we can shave off some, some precious time to make, to hit that target. In addition, we did something different this, this month. We held two virtual office hour sessions with our consultant, Kelly Mertens, where our staff were allowed to just attend the sessions, drop in, stay for the whole time, ask questions, get feedback, just from a different set of eyes instead of from us all the time. So, that seemed to be going well. The feedback was really good. They really focused on the present levels of academic achievement and functional performance pages, which is really a lot of capturing of the current data and how that imply, that impacts the classroom performance. So, feedback was really good. And then, finally, Kate and I continue to conduct site visits for all our students in our added district placements. These visits allow us to monitor the services for our kids that are placed there and to work collaboratively with those professionals as well, and help to support all of our students.
Very good. Thank you.
Great. So, I have the updates from the four principals. We gave them the night off. I hope you don't mind.
No, it's great.
None of them had any other agenda items, and we know that December is a, is a big month for nights out. So, so I will channel and be all four principals, starting with our youngest learners, although I can't quite pull off Liz Carpanito. She, she has a spark to her. So, what she's saying is that her Healthy Action Team at BES, including Mrs. Ward and Mrs. Cleary, have had some great activities and have some planned for our kiddos, including a jump rope group for grade two to start our day, and an open gym day for pre-K students this month. Kay in first grade, stay tuned after the break. On December 9th, there's a PTA Family Fun Night with the Toe Jam Puppet Band from 5 to 6. That's always a fun, fun thing to watch. On December 12th, their trimester one report cards and progress reports will be going home, and we will be doing that in hard copy again at parents' requests. So, on December 18th, it is a BOGO, BOGO Book Nook. Great time to get some books for your winter break. And she says, "Thank you to everyone who's been donating." So, the book nook is a, is a donation and a, and a take, so children can have more books. Onto BIS from Mrs. Colbert. "November was a month full of gratitude, celebration, and community at BIS. We were honored to host our annual Family Veterans Day breakfast, where we celebrated and thanked the incredible veterans within our BIS family. It was a special morning that reminded us of the importance of service, connection, and appreciation." I attended that one as well. It was really wonderful, packed house, as you saw in the pictures, well over 55 people. It was a lot of fun. We closed out the month with our first annual turkey trot, a playful nod to Mrs. Trot. It was turkey trot.
Yeah, the two Ts. They need to be sure it's.
One of the fourth graders went, "Do you get it?" He was so funny. They had a blast. I think they just enjoyed running around in circles. They had, as she said, "They had an absolute blast, running, cheering, and showing their BIS pride as they supported their classmates. It was a joyful way to wrap up November and move into the holiday season together. As we look ahead, excitement is building throughout the school. Students are eager to demonstrate their growth as term one comes to an end. Report cards will be issued on Friday, December 12th, and paper copies will be sent home as student backpacks. Lastly, our halls will be full of festive cheer during Holiday Spirit Week, December 8th through 12th, as students and staff rock around BIS with fun-themed spirit days." I said it was last, but it is not. On December 17th, from 3:00 to 4:00 PM, students are invited to join our Healthy Action Club for some lively reindeer games in the gym. Please be sure to RSVP if your child would like to participate. And we will conclude our holiday festivities on Friday, December 19th, by boarding the Polar Express. Students and staff are invited to come to school in their coziest pajamas as we enjoy a morning of songs, stories, and togetherness before heading into the holiday break." All right, moving on to the middle school. November recap. We would like to recognize Teresa Clifford, Sam Fassoli, and the Peer Leadership Club for spearheading the Thanksgiving food drive, and to thank our entire school community for their generous donations. Peer Leadership collected an impressive 888 items, which will support more than 300 families, or approximately 700 individuals, who rely on the Friends of Bourne Council and Aging Food Pantry each month. Upcoming in December, December 2nd, which was yesterday, there was a very awesome winter chorus concert at 6:00 PM. December 4th, which is tomorrow, they will have another awesome winter band concert at 6:00 PM. Those are held here, by the way. They're all free and open to the public. We hope that people will, will show up. On December 6th, there's a Santa's Workshop and Holiday Fair from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That is district-wide, but it's held at the middle school. Always a lot of fun. And then, don't miss, get your tickets now, to Annie Junior on December 12th and 13th. The 12th is at 7:00 PM. On the 13th, it is at 2:00 and 7:00. Don't miss it. I'm sure it will be amazing. And then, December 19th, from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM, there's a special ceremony, as all of you know, because we've been invited, to open the Bourne Middle School time capsule that was sealed 25 years ago when the school was first opened. So, I hope that many of you can join us. They also will have administrators from the past come back, and also people on the school building committee from the past. I don't know who those special guests are, but it's going to be exciting. So, I'm looking forward to that. Mrs. Labota says, "We're also planning many fun events for staff and students to get into the holiday spirit." So, too many things to, to talk about, I'm sure. And last but not least, the Bourne High School update. Congratulations, as Mrs. Borning said, to the BHS Drama Club for a strong performance in November of Lord of the Flies, which was creative and a very powerful rendition. The music department will be holding two upcoming performances. The Holiday Cabaret is this Friday at 5:00 PM in the Music Room. I believe it's the first holiday one. It's usually a spring cabaret, but this, this will be a lot of fun. This one has $5. For $5, join the students in continuing this tradition with a night full of music to celebrate the winter season. And then, on Tuesday, the 16th, unfortunately, at the same time as the joint meeting, they will have the winter concert at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. This is also free, and it'll feature music from the band and choral ensemble. So, send your significant others to go see that while you're in the meeting, unfortunately.
Yes, yeah.
And lastly, I, I ask a little later for us to take up a vote that isn't on the agenda. Due to unforeseen circumstances, we weren't able to get that on, but we have 89 students ready to participate in the upcoming 67th Annual Mass Deca District Competition being held at the Emerald Conference Center Resort in Hyannis. They've already gotten preliminary approval, so I hope that you'll indulge me in voting to put it on the agenda, and then voting it forward so that they can go on January 8th and 9th, and we wish them the best of the luck, best of luck in their programs. Also, as I'm sure you know, winter athletics has started. We have a full slate. We have many, many teams. We have some new coaches, so do watch for our press releases. We were, are always sad that our old coaches, our older coaches are retiring or have moved on, but we do have some new alumni and some folks that were in, you know, in, in the driver's seat before as an assistant coach kind of coming up, and we're, we're excited about this particular season. So, that is the full superintendent's report. So many exciting things happening. I will tell you that even though it's not on the agenda, we're still moving forward with all planning for the move-one-up. We've had several meetings. We're continuing with everything from staffing survey, which more than half of our staff have filled it out at this point, and they have another week and a half to do so, all the way through to our scheduling and refining, and meetings upon meetings upon meetings, but it's all worth it, because it will all come together, I think, with a great result a little later on in the spring.
That's excellent. Thank you so much, Dr. Joe. Anyone have any questions? No? No? Okay. All right, we'll go on to our subcommittees and district committees, starting with the curriculum subcommittee.
We are meeting tomorrow at 9:00 AM, so we'll, it's the next meeting.
All righty, thank you very much. Policy sub.
It was a quick, quick meeting.
It was, yes, yeah.
Amazing, so, so quick. Very, very efficient. Thank you.
Yes.
This was amazing, and we're going to be voting later.
Voting on a couple of things.
So, we can discuss what to do.
Exactly. Perfect. Okay. I have those things right in front of me. Thank you so much. Budget and facilities, subcommittee.
We did not meet. Our next meeting is December 19th at 10:30.
Excellent. Thank you. Special education parent advisory council. See you next.
We did, we did not meet. There's an event being planned for January.
Oh, perfect. Okay. You guys had a lot of time on your hands this month. No? I am just kidding. What have you been doing, though? Cape Cod collaborative. Carrie?
So, there is a new strategic plan committee that's putting everything together, so I was going to highlight a few of the decks. It's a huge deck, like, 80 pages, and there's quite a few amazing things that are happening, so I figured I would send that out as just highlighted pieces.
Nice.
So, I'll get that out next week.
Thank you so much. Thanks for taking that on, too. We appreciate it. And... We appreciate it. And the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee.
I can add to that one.
Oh, go for it.
Okay. So I took a couple of notes. This was my first meeting, so I was just kind of catching up on what goes on in here. We talked a little bit about Christmas traditions from around the world, virtual bookcase or bookshelf, just more so about the holidays and the traditions from around the world.
Nice.
They're looking at the date of the Lunar Celebration in January, but that wasn't 100% finalized.
We haven't known.
That is finalized.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yes. And that's being put together by, I think, a team that's working with Mara Dankart through the Council for Children, and it is.
Saturday, January 24th.
Oh, nice. Very nice.
Were they able to finalize the space?
Yes, it's here.
Oh, it is here? Okay.
What did she say?
I think it's the cafeteria. They'll even be lion dancing. It'll be a lot of fun.
Oh.
Crafts and maybe food, I'm not sure.
Is that for the whole district?
Yes.
It is? Oh, wow.
It says, "Children's flat crafts, pitch pot game, calligraphy, chopsticks challenge, dumpling making, and the lion dance."
Nice. Wow.
If you haven't seen the lion dance, and I believe they have professionals coming.
Yes, they do.
It's a lot of fun.
That's so exciting.
So we open to the public. It's actually being funded by a parent who really wanted to see it happen as a first annual, so it's exciting. We'll be welcoming the Year of the Horse, so.
Ooh, okay.
I believe, I don't know if anyone here are horses, but my parents are, so.
Oh, well, that's nice.
There could be a few folks, yeah.
And so it's open to the public as well as our school family?
Absolutely.
So perfect.
It'll be a lot of fun.
That's awesome. Thank you. Is that it?
That's pretty much it.
Perfect. Thank you for jumping on that committee.
Police coming in January?
The what?
Police coming in January.
I believe it's February. February meeting?
Is it February?
Oh, maybe she, excuse me, sorry, talking over you. I think she's coming to the DIB Committee in January and then coming possibly February.
For all of us.
The school committee.
Oh, yeah, two times. Great. That's great. I really like her. Good. Okay, thank you. Thanks very much, Kat. District Technology Committee.
Technology Committee met yesterday. It was a small group of us, but we had a good conversation around parents' work and how it's being utilized and kind of refining how teachers and how they're using it. I have to say, I think I shared the statistics last month, but we have like over 10,000 direct messages going back and forth between teachers and parents and caregivers. One of the comments, one of the comments from a teacher that was there was, she basically said, you know, "I always feel like I communicate well with the parents, but this is just completely up to my game in how easy it is to communicate with parents."
That's awesome.
So I was really happy to hear that feedback.
Oh, that's such.
So we had a conversation around that as well as talking about some technology professional development, quick hits for our teachers by teachers. Lisa Dix was there with me, as well as some of the other teachers. We're talking about how really high need, things that would benefit our staff, that maybe a colleague is doing really well with technology and kind of sharing their expertise. So we're looking into possible some kind of, some quick hit technology PDs scattered, sprinkled throughout the year.
Oh, I should attend some of those. Maybe I'll be in one of those.
I would personally attend either.
Thank you. Oh, I love it. Thank you so much. District School Wellness Advisory Committee.
I'll take that. Okay. We've had two meetings since our last school committee meeting. Our first meeting was on November 6th. This is a continuation of the program that we were in last year, the coaching program offered by the John Walker Institute. And at that first meeting, we evaluated the implementation of our new policy using the tool that's available on the Alliance for the Healthier Generation. The results of that assessment are available on the wellness webpage, off of the school webpage, the district webpage, rather. At the second meeting on November 20th, we set goals for this year, which are based off of those assessment results. So one of our goals is to include a parent, student, and a community agency on the committee next year to broaden the perspectives of the committee. So if you are interested in joining our group next year, please reach out to myself or co-chair, Ms. Christine Boring.
Wow, yeah.
We only meet four times a year legally required to. Sometimes we will meet more. Each meeting is about an hour. One of our other goals is to focus on staff wellness this year, and we did some brainstorming, and we decided to do a staff wellness newsletter. And big thank you to our head nurse, Rebecca Issa. She published our first staff wellness newsletter, and the newsletter highlighted a few of the multitude of resources all staff members can access through the EAP Network, which is a town benefit provided to all town employees. It's free of charge and completely confidential. On that, and that resource has connections to, I mean, how to care for your pet, how to care for your aging parents, just this investing, life skills, well-being. It's a great resource, so we're going to really try to highlight a couple of those segments each time we publish that. We're looking to do that four times a year. The newsletter also had a quick little staff survey, trying to get some input from staff about what kind of wellness activities that they would like to see offered and any interest that they have. In our next meeting, I don't remember when the date is. We have two more to go.
Nice. Oh, that's exciting. So the staff wellness, would that be like offering yoga classes or something before school?
Some of that's already happening.
Oh, is it?
At some of the buildings, yeah.
Oh, nice.
Or at least one of them, but.
I think it's happening at two.
Had two of them now?
Wow, that's great.
But I believe at least one of them is open to the whole district, like this campus.
The high school one? Yeah. Lisa Hanley, I think, right? Is that right? Is offering it here at the high school, and then Jen Ward offers it at BES.
Oh, that's so great. Nice. And then when you say the parent, student, and any agency that would like to volunteer to help out, the agency would be a business partner, like, would that be?
It could be any agency that's sort of connected in some, in some way to food service, wellness, anything at all.
All right. Thank you. That's awesome. Thank you so much. Where are we now? All righty, so discussion items. Thank you, everybody. Mask, join conference discussions. All righty, I attended mask, join conference. I went one day. Do you want me to start, or do you want to start, Kat? Not Kat, Carrie. I went one day, and I was thinking, I probably, so I joined, I didn't join, I went to the conferences, three of them, on relationship building, and I was thinking today, I'm like, that's my strength, so I really, next year, I'll have to go to like a technology or a finance one, you know? I did learn a lot, you know, the importance of, you know, the schools to partner with the other municipals in town, which I think we're doing a spectacular job of. I did attend one with how to work, the school committee to work with the superintendent, and I learned a lot. But I really feel like we have a good relationship, you know, and it's open and honest, so I felt really good about that. So I think, I think that's about it, but next year I will go to something that I'm a little less comfortable. And I really just kind of went with what I was comfortable with, which probably, you know, whatever, it's fine. Okay.
So I attended all three days. Couple of days I was there a little bit later, and then, you know, back and forth. But I would say the biggest takeaway for me was hearing some of the challenges in other districts with administration and the school committee, and it was kind of, you know, nice to be just kind of like sitting there and hearing people. And I was just like, no, I think we're good.
And it was so nice.
That was really good to hear. And there were a lot of, a lot of takeaways for, you know, some, some of the districts are really focused on trying to get the community more involved, and some of the things they're talking about, what about doing this and this? It's already things that we're implementing here, so that was really cool to see, too. I did share a couple of ideas as well, and it was, it was good. As far as voting on the resolutions, I think it was the quickest. It was like 15 minutes or something. It was like crazy quick. There was a few recognitions, a couple of new inductees to, you know, their holiday, if you will, lifetime leadership type of recognition, but it was, it was really good. It was very, I think everybody was on the same page for the most part.
Yes.
And, you know, the issues that some, that was common amongst everybody was the fiscal challenges. People were worried about that.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, we have a good grasp on making sure that, you know, we are focused on, you know, where we can pinch a little bit and where we absolutely cannot. So it was, it was good. And I've been to a couple of, I'm trying to think of exactly which breakout sessions, but I, too, was like you, like, you know, I think next time we go to something that's, that I'm not necessarily comfortable with.
Right. That's what I need to, too. Yes. Yes, definitely. And the lunch was delightful. It was so good. So thank you for, you know, allowing us to do that. That was, that was great.
And to hear the new Desi, the new Desi, I can't think of his name.
Commissioner Martinez?
Yes.
Oh, was he the one that spoke? Oh, he was.
And I, I felt really good about that. He, it seems like he's got his eyes open to like really look and say, hey, we are in Massachusetts. We should have better results across the, across the state with. And, you know, he was open to say he was kind of surprised that we didn't have as much advancement. He was expecting greater results. And I thought that was good for him to acknowledge that, that we have a lot of tools here. We've got to figure out where the disconnect is, and I'm excited to see what he's going to bring to the table. What will be your thoughts on your Mike?
Oh, you shouldn't put me on the spot. No, I think, I think he's learning. He's, he's getting to know us. And yeah, I have hope. I think, I think he'll do well.
I think, I think so, too.
Yes, totally. Thank you for that. So during the lunch, they were showing a video of different schools and what they're doing, like their pathways and just different things like that, and I felt like every slide was born public schools. You know, we're just doing all of that, you know? So I was, I was so excited, and I'd love to get our, get up there on that screen next year.
Well, we can put together a program if you want. They're always taking proposals, so.
Oh, that would be great. I know, I was kind of waiting. I was like, oh. Yeah.
Surprise.
I know, surprise. I just wanted to get up and shout, "We're doing this, too!"
That's great. Yeah, I had a similar, I went to more nuts and bolts things, as you know, because we touched base, so legal, and I went to an MSBA one that kind of took it from soup to nuts, just kind of, you know, because we thankfully are in the pipeline for our new roof, but again, I'm thinking forward into if we're able to someday do a renovation here. So that would be like a different type of MSBA, so I was interested in that. I think one of my biggest takeaways, kind of the most interesting one, was the keynote at night with Amanda Ripley. I don't know if you were able to see that as well. She's an author from DC. First of all, she sat with us the night before, which was really fun. So I didn't know who she was, and then we all started chatting. And I think it was with the Dartmouth crew, Chris.
Oh.
The night before you got there.
Okay.
Yeah, it was with Dartmouth School Committee and other folks. But long story short, so I really got to know her, which was kind of cool. And then later at the keynote, which was a lunch, at the very end, when she gave an example of something, it was actually my example. So she looked over at me, and I'm like, "Don't, don't out me." It was really fun, though.
Oh, that's awesome.
So it was good. And it was about a high conflict and kind of good conflict, and the idea that when you're presented with folks that, you know, really either want to stir up the soup or just are, you know, very elevated emotionally about what they want to talk about, sometimes the best thing to do is just say, "Hey, do you want to go out for coffee?" You know, so that's what, when we were talking about those things, and then later she's like, "And I was talking with these superintendents last night in one set." And you would hear among the crowd, people go, "Oh, oh, oh." You know, sometimes it's really hard to imagine that, but it just kind of, it's worked for me. You just kind of take it down a few notches. Sometimes people never take you up on the offer, which is always nice when you don't have to talk to them. But sometimes you go out and you actually are able to talk as a human, which is really nice, too. So, so yeah, that was, again, probably the word is validating that, you know, it's nice to hear what others are going through and also know that we're poised for a small school district. We're poised in a really good place, and so I always feel fortunate.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. All righty. So vote to approve warrants and payroll.
Let me see here. Move to approve warrants and payroll.
Okay, everybody sign this. All righty. Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? This is going to flow a little better. You would think, like how many, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All righty, so the next one, vote to approve regular session minutes, which were in our, yeah, which were in our folder.
I don't think they were in the folder.
They, they were?
Not for tonight.
There's a link to that. I was looking.
Oh, is there a link on that?
School Committee Minutes. Yeah, they were in the.
Were they?
They were. Yeah, but, yeah, November. We want to take a quick look.
Yeah, we had like a link request access, like it wasn't allowed.
Oh, that's why, okay.
That was the issue.
Yeah, I did not have access.
Oh, we need permission to.
Oh, shoot. Sorry about that. Do you want to, do you want to move this to the next meeting so we can take a better look at it?
That was it. It says, "You need permission to open this item."
That was it. It says you need permission to open this item. I didn't see it. I just requested access. Okay.
Everyone should have access now, so I apologize for that. Sometimes when it gets moved, it changes on the access, so.
Why don't we, can we move it to the next meeting to approve? Just, I don't want to rush anybody. I'm sorry?
There is a lot there.
Yeah, there's a lot there. So we'll move, do I have to make a motion to move that to, okay, we'll move that to the next meeting in January. Ready, vote to revise competency determination policy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, did everybody read? Okay, gotcha. All right. Did everyone have the opportunity to read this? All righty. So would somebody like to make a motion to approve?
Move to approve the competency determination policy.
All right. Do I hear a second? All right, second. Who did the second? I'm sorry, Carrie. Thank you. Any discussion?
I just wanted to say that it was really good to hear about how much of the contribution the teachers made to this, because it's, I think this is going to be more work for the teachers than, you know, an MCAS test that just gets digitally graded and digitally sent out. So it's going to be more work, so I thought it was really important, which you guys were already on that.
Yeah, and that's really, I mean, Dr. McGuire and Jesse Clements, that was really their work. Jesse met with each, they met with each team. They worked with the team, yeah, departments. They worked with the team leader. So that was, you know, all of their work. But they did get quite a bit of feedback from each of the departments that is impacted by this.
Nice. Okay.
I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Yep, definitely. All right, so that was the discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? This motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Boring, on that. All righty, we have two more. Vote to revise CTE middle school policy. It was that one paragraph. Did everyone see that in red? Bold, it sounds a lot better.
Thank you. Yeah, that was nice of you to point out. Whoever wrote it the first time was terrible.
In the meeting, just as a side note, I know, I said, this sounds so much better. This is awesome. I was like, whoa, who wrote that other one? And it was her, too.
It's like, I'm the author of both.
She's the author of both, but this was a real upgrade.
You know what? Yeah, I got way better at it.
Thank you. You did. You did. So is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the CTE middle school policy.
Is revised?
Yeah.
Perfect. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The motion unanimously passes. Thank you so much. All righty. All right.
Do you want to add?
We want to add the, thank you very much, the DECA District Eight competition. So field trip.
So you have a motion to put it on the agenda?
Put it on the agenda. Okay.
And that has to pass?
And then we do that. Okay, okay. So can I have a motion?
To approve the, just putting the DECA trip, competition trip on the agenda.
Okay, second. Okay, thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any discussion? Sorry. No. All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The motion passes to be put on the agenda. All righty. So we'll have, would like to vote for the, oh, can I have a motion, please, to, is it pass or?
To approve.
Final approval.
Final approval. Okay, thank you. The DECA District Eight competition field trip.
So moved.
All right, thank you. Second. Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, say no. Any abstentions? The motion unanimously passes. That's a tongue twister. Okay. Thank you so much. Future agenda items, continued discussion about the facilities use planning and student spotlight. So those are, yeah, so that's for the future. And I missed out at the beginning with not saying the mission, and I love our new mission and our new vision, so I'm going to say it before we close. The Bourne Public School mission, together with staff, families, and the community, we empower all students to thrive within a culture of academic excellence in a creative and innovative environment where everyone is safe, respected, and valued. And our vision is inspired to learn, empowered to explore, and prepared to act. And before we close, I just have a couple of comments here. Sorry, it's a page. But I just wanted to thank some people before the end of the year closes. This is our last meeting for the year. I would like to thank our administration team for all that you do, all that you guys have done this year for the teachers and the students. The district strategic plan was a doozy, so you guys really worked hard on that, and we really appreciate you guys. Thank you so much to the staff members for always putting our students first. We really, really appreciate you guys. To all of our student advisors, we really appreciate you always stepping up and always showing up. That really is important, and it means the world to us. And lastly, I would like to thank the school committee members. We really put a lot of time in this year, so I want you to know, I hope I tell you enough, how much I appreciate all of you guys.
Well, we appreciate you as well.
Thank you. Thank you.
You did an amazing job.
Thank you.
She'll lead that all school committee should have.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, thank you so much. Yeah, I just love it. I love it so much. So, was that it, district plan? Yeah, I think that was it. So I'd like to call the meeting. Wait a minute, it's only six fifty-two. We need to talk more. So I'd like to call the meeting. Thank you. Thank you to the community members, to our families, to, you know, the parents' guardians. We really appreciate you, and we're looking forward to next year with everybody. It's going to be a really exciting year with a new strategic plan. So thank you very, very much. I'd like to close the meeting or call, I got to get this straight, to adjourn the meeting at six fifty-three.
We have to vote on that.
Yeah, okay. Move to adjourn. I move to vote that we adjourn the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, second. Okay, any discussion? I put my paper away. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty.